I'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Thank you. Any additions or counsel? Michael Hallie wanted to add a report regarding meeting with the State Preserves Board, under Board Reports. Anything else? Now we'll go to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the April 26, 2021 council meeting. Approval of April 3, 30, 2021 payroll in the amount of $130,244.24. Resolution authorizing funds transfers. Approval of USDA Step 1 debt in the amount of $12,975. Approval of USDA wastewater treatment plant debt in the amount of $77,295. Approval of Step 2 interim financing interest in the amount of $52,347.72. Approval of the April finance report. Consent of park use permit for First Baptist Church. That's a noise exemption on May 16, June 13, July 11, and August 15. Consent of park use permit for Four Square Church, noise exemption, May 28, June 25, July 23, August 27, September 24, and October 22. Resolution approving employment in the sanitary sewer department. Resolution approving seasonal employment in the sanitary sewer department. Resolution approving employment in the park and recreation department. Approval of liquor license for Casey's General Store, number 1714, that's West Veterans Club. And approval of total claims in the amount of $679,170.73. Claims more than $75,000 include Maxwell Construction in the amount of $361,828.39.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Any questions or discussion?
I had a question about the park use permit for what time of day for Four Square? Probably the same as a morning. Is that right? I just assumed a morning. Okay.
And Tom?
I was just gonna say I'd like to abstain from approving Andrew Toohill on the Park and Rec, who's my son, lifeguarding.
Great, great. Thank you. Okay, please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Thank you. Under public forum and appearances, we will start with a Sierra Club presentation. And counsel, just so you know, we're giving them a little longer than normal for their presentation, so. So they have 15 minutes.
Thank you. Do you mind if I remove my mask?
No, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
It'll be a little clearer.
And council members, we appreciate you giving us the time this evening to present to you. Clicker. Okay, thank you. I'm Ann Walton, and this is Carolina Boussette, and we're here today from the, we're both board members of the Sierra Club, the Southeast Iowa Sierra Club. Carolina is also a student body president of MIU, so we feel pleased to have a student on our, on our board. We're going to present to you today on our strategic plan. Many of you, we've already met with and gone over the details of this, so I'll go pretty quickly. But we want to talk about what we see as the future of our work at Sierra Club and how that intersects with the city and the county and other partners throughout Fairfield. Let's see if I can do this. Thank you. Oh, I can't read that either. So what you see here, we spent, we took time during COVID since we couldn't actually undertake any activities and meet in person. We spent several months reviewing where we'd been, where we had been at Sierra Club over the last few years, and also looked at where we thought Fairfield and Jefferson County are after having had the experience of going through COVID. I think we all learned a lot from that experience in terms of both our strengths and our weaknesses as a community, and we realized that from our vantage point, what we needed to focus our work on was building a more resilient community into the future. And you can use any term you want interchangeably with that. Some people use climate resilience, some use sustainability. It doesn't matter really to us, we're not attached to any term, but we're really interested in seeing a broader collaboration than we've seen in the past and working towards defining what we need to do to make us a more resilient community. And as I said, some of that we learned from COVID, so some of that we learned about the weaknesses in our education system, and not all kids equally have access to technology. That leaves some kids behind. We also saw that in terms of access to medical care. And as we know, like most of the United States, we have issues with affordable housing. And I don't just mean low-income housing, but a range of housing that meets everybody's needs. So at Sierra Club, we have obviously a very specific mission. We're not addressing the whole world of what could be done, but we identified four priority areas where we felt like we had expertise, and it was also within our mission to address these issues, and that would be our contribution to building a resilient community. So the first area that we are focusing on, we call them thematic areas, and we have four teams. And the first thematic area or team is really built on, it's really based on building a resilience model. And I'll explain some of that in a little bit more detail in a few minutes. The second theme that we decided to take on, because we have expertise in that, as well as transitioning to clean renewable energy resources. And I think Michael Moore is here, some of you know Michael, and he comes from about 13 years or plus of experience in renewable energy, so he's the team lead on that. The next area, the third thematic area, is restoring vitality to our wildlands, wildwaters, and wildlife. For many reasons, we think this is important, it's within our purview anyway, but, but we also think that it's important right now because there's a lot of opportunities when you have a fully functioning ecosystem or ecosystems represented within your area for the purposes of providing clean water, clean air, also for carbon sequestration, but also provides recreational opportunities and, from an economic standpoint, opportunities for visitors, for example. So it's, it's an important area all around. And then the fourth area is transitioning to zero waste through thoughtful consumption, waste reduction, and redirection. And as we've spoken to many of you, we believe this is an issue in terms of our resilience as well, and it's not clearly defined how that's being addressed now, but that's part of our job. And Mark Dwyer, as many of you know back here, is the lead on that particular thematic area. So collectively, these are our contributions to resilient Fairfield and Jefferson County. And I want to emphasize, we're looking at those as a whole, the need to look at, to work at both the city and the county level. We also want to note that we are just a small piece of the resilience picture, that partnering with the city and the county and other organizations is a big part of what we'll be doing, and we spent actually the last three months talking to and listening to others in this community, other organizations, other people, all of you here, to try and understand what you think the issues are and how they should be framed and defined in terms of building a resilient community. Okay, let's see if I can do that. So I'm not going to go through the details of the plan. I think all of you received an electronic version, and most of you have received a hard copy of the plan as well. And what you see here is just an example of how we broke down one of the thematic areas, and all four thematic areas are broken down in the plan. And the first thing that we did was to really define what the goal is, and in this case, this example is transitioning to zero waste. It's our fourth thematic area. So you can see what's circled up there, first, right up front. What is it we're trying to achieve by addressing transitioning to zero waste? The second thing that we really wanted to answer in this graphic is, so what's the problem? We really wanted to define the problem, this is a pretty simplistic definition of what the problem is, but so that we had a common vocabulary, a common understanding. And then the third piece of this schematic is, this graphic is, why is this a priority? So it's not only why is this a priority for Sierra Club, but in terms of our community and building resilience. And then the next area that you see, I'm not coordinated enough to do this and that at the same time, is the projects. So we, we laid out the project, in this case, in the five sort of overarching steps that we'll take to achieve our goal at the top. And then finally, what kind of results do we expect to see? What are the outcomes that we're looking for? And these are short, mid, and long-term outcomes over the three-year period of our strategic plan. And then we have detailed work plans behind all four of these thematic areas with timelines and, you know, assignments and, and how we're going to actually move through this over the next three years. So, and we're happy to share that, but most people don't want to read another matrix that's, it's really tedious, but that was the basis for building these, the graphics, and these are the simplified version of our work plans. So after we built our plan, we wanted to do our due diligence, and that was to shop around and see, of course, what is everybody else doing and how do we match up to that? Or in fact, what are some of the gaps when we talk about resilience? And so we naturally came, actually very early on, to the Forever Fairfield Plan, which all of you approved in, I think, January 2019? Is that right, Connie? Something like that?
Twenty, twenty.
Pretty early on. Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, twenty twenty.
Yeah, just a little over a year ago.
Yeah, a little over a year ago. And what we found is that, oops, sorry, I'm doing the wrong line. Sorry. What we found was that our thematic areas matched up pretty well to a lot of the different parts of the Forever Fairfield Plan. Now, we understand, as you do, this is a comprehensive plan, and so it lays out goals and it lays out policies, but it's not an action plan. And once we looked at our plan, our strategic plan, and we compared it to the Forever Fairfield Plan, we found that we looked like an implementation piece of many of these goals and policies that are in your plan, and we're happy about that. We feel like, good, this won't have to be another shelved plan, but that maybe we can keep this plan alive and show that, that some of these goals and policies can actually be achieved in terms of actions. So I'm gonna pass this over to Carolina, and she's gonna walk you through the next piece.
Thank you, thank you. So in our plan, it highlights resilient communities, and that can mean a lot of things, but what really is it? So it's a forward-thinking, it's a forward-thinking community that's proactive rather than reactive. It's a community that builds partnerships between the public and private sectors that helps breed innovation and cultivates a clear vision of the future. It's a community that's, has a diverse economy and attracts young people, and as a young person, if I'm looking for a place to lay down roots, I want to pick a city that feels safe and secure regardless of outside stimuli. I want a city that's food sovereign, I want a city that cares about its people and mainly nourishes a commitment to the future and future generations. So why now? We've, like, she said, we've seen COVID has kind of shown us our strengths and weaknesses, and we've seen droughts, we've seen floods, we just saw the derecho, and we're seeing other Iowa communities around us really make a commitment to resilience, and they're reaping the benefits, so why not us? So other communities like Burlington, Decora, Mason City, Dubuque, Troy, Story Counties, they've all made a commitment to sustainability. So with this, we're looking for a partnership between MIU, the county, and the city to really create this sustainability task force and also the sustainability coordinator position. When this was first brought to MIU, the thing that was really exciting to them was helping bridge that gap. MIU needs Fairfield, and Fairfield needs MIU. And be able, being able to work on these projects together to see them into fruition, that's what was really exciting to the President's Cabinet and Dr. Haglund as well. So with the sustainability task force, task force that includes businesses, entrepreneurs, leaders, professors, people in the green space that can really help us come up with this resiliency plan to move Fairfield into the future and think about future generations, and then also having a forum at the end of the fall highlighting other resilient communities and what they're doing and what we want to bring to Fairfield. So Fairfield had a sustainability coordinator, it's been about five, six years since we've had one, and they planted about 500 different trees and created a community fruit and net orchard. Recycling increased 67%. $3 million went towards energy efficiency projects. We reduced energy consumption as a city by almost 6%, raised about $1.4 million in different funds from grants and other funding sources. And then they also got an $80,000 grant from the State Office of Energy and Independence for the Go Green Plan. It also kind of got us on the map online. Fairfield was named one of the top 15 green mayors by MSN, and then we also got a couple other awards from Alliant Energy and the state governor's environmental excellence award.
Thank you. So just to be clear, there's four areas that we would like to partner on. The first is a sustainability coordinator position to be shared between the city, the county, and MIU. And MIU has already made a commitment to support one-third of that position for three years, and they're, they're ready to run it through their system if that's the easiest way to do it because they represent the private sector. The second piece of that is then to create a new task force, much like the one during the Go Green, the development of the Go Green Plan, but a task force that's ongoing and is really representing the community and all the different sectors in the community and advising the city and the county. And then the third piece was, of course, a forum, which Sierra Club will be presenting in the fall, looking at resilient communities around Iowa and the Midwest to see what might be applicable, so we don't have to create this idea of a resilient community out of whole cloth. And then the fourth area is then again to have a resilient plan, Go Green Plan 2, whatever you want to call it, but to continue the work that was started in 2010 to 2020, which is, the plan is now expired. So naturally, every time we talk to, to anybody, particularly in government, I worked for government for 25 years, so I get it, the first thing is the smokescreen goes up about money. Where's the money coming from? So we actually think this is a really opportune time, and we came to you sooner than we anticipated because we think there's so much in the pipeline right now, more so than there has been in a long, long time, for, to support these kinds, this kind of programming, to build a resilient community. So one thing we know is that you've already made decisions and committed your budget for the next fiscal year. There's always discretionary funds when something is a priority, so we would, what we're asking for is $15,000, for you to consider $15,000 for one-third of the sustainability coordinator position. Benefits and all the other sort of accretments that go with a new position will be taken over by MIU if that's how you want the partnership to work. That's not up to us. So we, we ask you to look at your discretionary funds and see if that's an area where you might be interested in funding this position. There's also the American Rescue Plan, so this is already in law. This was passed in March. The funds have not yet been distributed, but from what I heard today, it's going to be next week. Nobody knows until it's in the bank, and I understand you don't want to commit until something's in the bank. $350 billion across all states. Our understanding is, we've heard between $1.4 and $1.9 million for the city, and we've heard $3.4 for the county. So again, nobody knows what the parameters of that are, so we'll, we'll all wait and see, there'll be many hands out, I'm sure, when, once that money arrives. There's also bipartisan authorization bills, so other opportunities in the pipeline that apply to water, energy, and highway bills, so all infrastructure pieces. And then the American Jobs Plan, or the Thrive Act. So this is still in progress right now. The latest numbers we have is a proposal, will be a proposal for $1 trillion a year for 10 years for 15 million new jobs and clean energy initiatives. And we think this is also sort of an interesting pot of money, you know, like Carolina said, she wants to move, she wants to, to, you know, move, to be a part of a community where she knows she, she can have some future employment. And definitely, this is, as we know from all the data, the, the new sort of security, job security is in green energy and, as well as looking at what's happening with infrastructure. So I think this is important to our community if we want to continue to attract young people. We are aging out, and we need an influx coming in at the other end, but where people, young people will come in or they'll stay from MIU, and they'll feel like there is housing for them as they enter the housing market, as they have families, as they age, they'll have jobs that will provide them with security, and also that we're a thriving city, and we feel like resilience is, is equated with being a thriving city, county, and community. So let me see here, what's next. So how is this going to benefit Fairfield? Well, we think, even before we receive any of the funds that we hope Fairfield will receive, there, we think there's opportunities for green economic development, for jobs, as long as we're prepared and we have shovel-ready projects in the pipeline on our side. Those of you who have received federal, worked with federal funding in the past know that particularly when it's attached to an administration, when they're ready to let the money out, they want to know you're ready to receive it because they need to show that something's been done in two years before the next election cycle starts up again. So we need to really think about with all this money coming down the pipe, what is it that we could use here to create a more resilient community? We also think that if we have this private-part, public partnership between the city, county, and all the other organizations like Sierra Club, there's opportunities to apply for private-public partnership grants and funds. And that was already shown the last time, as Carolina said, the last time we had a sustainability coordinator, that, what was it, over $8 million worth of, of funding came in as a result of that, of public-private partnerships with the city. We want to, we think this approach allows us to develop an integrated way to address critical social, economic, and environmental issues while creating opportunities for public participation. So look across the, the spectrum of what is needed in our community and not just focus on green initiatives or conservation, which is the area we come from, but to look what the needs are all across the spectrum to create a resilient community. And of course, we hope the net result will be an invigorated community and that we'll be able to adapt to change and also be resilient when change comes down the pike. And we know what we've seen, we saw derecho last year, we saw this year what happened in, in Texas. You know, we're always subject, like everybody else is, to some unexpected major event, and so are we going to be proactive or reactive? Are we going to be prepared for that and be a resilient community or not? And I think COVID was a good test for us, and we still don't know what the recovery from that's going to be. And then just to be able to work and not look at the city and say, this is what you should do, or the county, this is what you do, should be doing, but to say, let's do this as a partnership and have a really extensive network of organizations and individuals who are working together. There's tons of expertise in this community to make this happen. So thank you very much for providing us with this opportunity to present to you, and I think our ask for tonight, it's not for the whole bundle, we realize that's a lot to ask for at once, so we're starting with step number one, and that is to look at the sustainability coordinator position, and we hope that either there'll be a motion on it tonight or you'll direct it, whether it's to a committee or whatever it might be, so that there can be further discovery on it. And we're happy to answer any questions and, and concerns, because oftentimes there's, we see the obstacles rather than the opportunities, and that's something we've been trying to work our way through as we've been meeting with lots of individuals and organizations.
Counsel, questions?
Ann, you mentioned that there was a time when Fairfield had a sustainability coordinator. When was that?
About six, seven years.
About six or seven years ago?
Since we've had.
About 2010 to 2015 or 16.
For about five.
I've never met Scott Tim, Richard Fallow.
Yeah.
At some point, we had to share him with Iowa Extension because we couldn't afford his, his full salary, so he went 50/50 with us and Iowa Extension. And we never really found a place for his, his salary in our budget. It was every year coming from lost or, or whatnot, and then we got to the point where budget got really tight and he was let go. And I can say that our sustainability initiatives went from a flow to a trickle after he left. Not to toot my own horn, but I've tried to keep tree plagiics and electric vehicle charging station grants, whatever I can, but it's, I don't have the weight, the, the means to keep up the, the level that he was doing. So I fully support this. I think it's great that it's coming from the community. You know, if the city comes up with an idea and then kind of pushes it on the community, it sometimes doesn't stick. I saw the Go Green Commission kind of fade and try to be brought back to life and fade again, but this group has legs, they're committed, they're excited, and I can tell you right now, you can take 15K from the solid waste fund and it wouldn't put a dent in it, and it's not a big ask. And they're going to be working on solid waste, so that's an easy place to pull it from. I wasn't even thinking that until I saw this tonight. You know, we got $203,000 in a solid waste fund that's just been accruing for many years, so I'd love to see this position funded, you know, if we just do it one year at a time and just get back in the game of sustainability. We've been, we've been out of it for too long. There's so many other communities doing this. I'll just tell you, the last few months, I've been on conference calls with the group who's trying to form a new sustainability initiative. It's the University of Iowa, wants to do a pilot project that they fund, a position that's shared among maybe six pilot communities. And initially, I thought we could be a good fit, but this is better because this is local. You get somebody coming in, kind of helping you from a distance, you know, that reminds me of Blue Zones, where your limit, your options are a little more limited. When you've got somebody who's doing university, county, city together, we've never had that. That's powerful. That's, there's a lot of possibilities with that. I know we don't typically release funds in one night, but what do you guys think?
Well, I'd like to thank the Sierra Club for coming up with this project and doing such a nice job on presenting it to the council, because that's a fantastic step forward for us, it really is, and so we should be really grateful. My other point is that we have this plan, if we don't put some, some effort behind it, some, many money and commitment, what's the point of having the plan if we're not going to exercise it and execute it? So I would make the motion to refer that idea to Environmental Franchise, take a look at that fund and come back to council with a recommendation.
I'll second it. Would you, would you be willing to meet between now and our next meeting?
Yeah.
So by, by our next meeting, have a recommendation.
Point I asked, too, I wasn't on the board back when Mr. Tim was, but our portion of this is less than half of what we were paying, I believe, for him. Is that correct?
Yeah, we would get, we'd be getting more bang for our buck, paying 15K.
Yeah.
For this person than what we were.
His salary was around quite a bit more than that when we were paying half, right?
I believe we're paying 30-something thousand.
Thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-eight.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that was half or not, but that was our, the city's portion.
Okay.
Just one question. Did I understand or interpret correctly that if this position were to be filled, he'd be an employee of MUM?
That's up to you. They, they are willing to do that. We're just the brokers.
Okay.
That's something you would have to talk about, and also, what does the work plan look like? We put together a sample work plan and submitted it to Connie, and I'd be happy to, if it's okay with you, to distribute that to everybody. And also the task force, we put together a concept paper. We're trying to think everything ahead before we deliver it to anybody and say, what, what could this, what should this look like? So at least we have a conversation piece to go by. So we, but the logistics of employing somebody is out of our purview, but MIU has stated that yes, they would run it through their personnel department and take care of all the associated tax ramifications.
Or the management.
Yeah, and HR type of stuff that needs to be considered.
That's what they did with Scott. He was an Extension employee and we just, we decided to.
So we've already done this before?
Done before.
Okay.
Yeah, and you guys would have to figure out transfer funds and how, we're just, we're just the middle guys here, so. But I just also wanted to build off a little bit of what Michael said, is that we've done a lot of research on other resources that are available outside of our community. University of Iowa has a sustainability center there, and they have an interdisciplinary program where you can say what it is you want to achieve, and they'll send experts in all these different disciplines to help you. achieve, and they'll send experts in all these different disciplines to help you. So there's also the EPA Sustainability Initiative for cities and communities. And there's opportunities there, not only for funding, but for, for technical support as well. So once you make the commitment, it's so much more can come to you because you've kind of joined the club, if you, if you will. And it's, I think you have to look at making a commitment to a sustainability coordinator just allows you to leverage a whole lot more other opportunities aside from the partnership with, and you know, the county still has to agree to this as well, I should say. But we, we needed, you know, someone to put it out there and say, okay, we'll start this and MIU to bid first. And so we went with that and then came to Connie.
So Ann, do I understand that included in this would be a job description, something that would be measurable, so we could say, this is what we invested in? And then we'd have a, a measure by which we could say, yes, we reached some goals and, and what we were aiming for in these three or four years here?
Yes. And so first of all, I should say, we think three years is just getting it kick-started.
Right.
But we had to start with something reasonable.
That's the initiative at the beginning, is what I'm saying.
But in the job description, we laid out very specific tasks that had to be achieved during the three-year period. Of course, that's our timeline. That may not be yours, but since we were attaching the length of the commitment for that position.
Right. That's what I was looking for.
Yes, of course. Yes. And you know, it can be further articulated based on what the city wants to see, but we just threw it out, put it in there. So it's a, it's a discussion piece, so you can refine that. And we're happy to work together on that if that's appropriate. And we don't, that's up to you.
And just so you know, counsel, after talking with Sierra Club, because I've talked to them a couple of times about this, and I've been, for lack of a task force, I have been putting some, talking to some people, at least through our volunteer action committees, that we can, you know, we can get up and going to help with this until we had such time where we could really be more working with the county, because we haven't directly worked with them on any of this. But, so there is a little movement going underneath with some people who are interested in participating. And so I just wanted to mention that. I guess there, there is a motion on the floor, moved by Flornoy, second by Hallie, to move this to the Environmental Committee. So is there any other questions or discussion? No, please call the roll. Rebecca?
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you. That was unanimously approved. Thank you, Sierra Club, for all your hard work.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, so the next appearance will be Don Hawk of the Citywide Garage Sales. Is she here? Okay, does anybody know anything about, Rebecca, Rebecca, do you know anything about the Citywide Garage Sale?
I don't.
No? Okay, I guess we'll just move on.
Okay.
And Darren Hamilton, Kids' Day Parade.
Hi, I'm Darren Hamilton. I'm here representing the Kiwanis Club of Fairfield. And this is our current president, Dr. Alex Roth. And he's going to tell us a little bit about what's coming up September 18th.
So as a club, we've decided to bring Kids' Day back this year, obviously. The 18th is our projected date of September. It'd be the third weekend of September. And we're just here in front of the council to, to share that information. The theme is going to be sharing kindness.
Correct.
Right. So what we want is just to, to share that information with you guys and to make sure that we are okay, you know, reserving the west side of the square for Pancake Tent and, and business as usual this year. Anything else, Darren?
No, we'll, we'll be putting up the tent on Thursday prior to that Saturday, the 18th, and putting all the equipment in on Friday like normal. We'll come back at a later date to talk to the fire chief, to see about the firemen to come help and put up the tent. We've also talked to a few community groups already about their participation with the Kids' Day event. We're hoping that we're going to have a, a really good turnout this year. We know that there is still going to be some apprehension of people about closeness and contact. And we're going to work with the CDC guidelines that are laid out for us right now on how we're going to perform this activity and get it as close as we can to what it was like prior to COVID coming and trying to get us back on track again to actually be able to raise some money so that the Kiwanis Club can continue to do many of the good things that we always strive to do for the community.
Great, thank you. And you'll come back to us with your plan to block off a couple lanes and all the jazz later.
Yes, I'll get all of that to Daryl Bysgard like usual. I'll also talk to Chief Thomas and like I said, with Scott Vaughn, the chief, fire chief, so that we can get everything worked out as we always have in the past.
Great.
And we'll get some assistance from the county with barricades, the orange cones that you always see.
Great.
So we're looking very much forward to it. I know that when we first began talking about it as a club, we had a little bit of apprehension between the members as far as what we were going to do and how we were going to do it. But ultimately, we've decided to move forward. And along with that, we have a little bit of exciting news that coming up at the end of June at the Kiwanis International Convention, our project here in Fairfield is being considered as one of the top 12 projects in the world for a signature project of Kiwanis for our area. We won that designation from the Nebraska-Iowa District of Kiwanis, which covers from North Platte, Nebraska, all the way across to Iowa City. And we were chosen number one out of eight that had submitted their projects for that, went on to the international competition, and we were notified that we are in the semifinalists at this point for the worldwide award. So it's going to be a big thing if we happen to come in in the top three for the gold, silver, bronze award and what it means to the Kiwanis Club and what it means to not only them, but the city of Fairfield as a whole, because our program has been just tremendous over the years. I was sitting, trying to calculate up how many years it's been. The first one was held in 1965, so this would have actually been our 56th year, well, 54th with the parade and the pancakes and all of that. 55th, if we would have included the, the one time that we took kids bowling at the very beginning. But it could have been the 56th year, but we, we aren't having that because of what happened with us last year and the inability to do that. So we're looking at the 54th time that we've served pancakes on the square here in Fairfield on a Saturday in September.
Well, that's awesome. We wish you luck. And you know, you've already won a gold medal in our, in our eyes, so.
Well, thank you.
It's such a great event every year. So we look forward to kind of getting back to normal and hopefully by September, it'll even be better in the community.
That's what we're thinking.
That's, that's our hopes and dreams at this point in time.
Yes, right.
All right.
Great, thank you very much. We look forward to coming.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to resolutions, action items, and ordinances. Our action item is to set a public hearing on the, on budget amendments for Monday, May 24th, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
Move we set the public hearing for the budget amendment for May 24th, 2021.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Toohill. Any discussion or questions? Aaron, do you want to say anything? Did you want to say anything?
I can. Basically, what we're doing is we're, because of the public safety costs that we've incurred over this last year that weren't necessarily budgeted, like the fires, the fire truck, the fire state, or the purchase of the DOT properties and radios that were basically made ineffective because they moved the radio tower that we weren't aware of. We had to purchase new radios and stuff. So we're adjusting for those costs. So a lot of those costs actually were paid through by carriers' money, along with money that we had on hand. The, the other thing we're, we're putting in, just more or less to try and make, try and follow along with what the auditors are, are asking us to do is we're putting in more transfer dollars than what we had anticipated, just so that we're making sure that everything is kosher as far as auditors are concerned.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Aaron?
Would this be the final budget amendment for the current fiscal year?
Yes. Yes, only, the only one this year that we've done.
Okay.
So it's covering, it's actually covering the entire fiscal year rather than making more than one. We're just going to do one here at the end.
Great. No other questions? Rebecca, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next action item, set a public hearing on acceptance of the dedication deed acknowledging completion of the gift of Petrus Park on Monday, May 24th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. John, do you want to talk about this?
Yes. I guess my hope is that between myself and Melanie, we may have Mr. Stanley.
I've already talked to him. He's planning on being here.
All right. Right in front of Sierra Club's complete package and Darren Hamilton's request is a group of papers. They are going to probably be amended a little bit. They're going to be in front of the Greater Jefferson County Foundation before it comes here with the deed. And probably Mr. Stanley and his attorney also to make sure that his family trust likes what we did to conclude this. There are about 15 pages of that paperwork that ends with an 82, 83 IRS form. That's two pages of acceptance of a gift. And then the foundation's agreement that started this whole thing three years ago. So there'll be a little bit different look to some of these papers when we talk about it on the 24th, and Mr. Stanley will be here, you're saying. So if there's anything very different, we'll make sure you know about it. But the idea is that our resolution is necessary to show that we accepted his gift as complete. And then there will be some things from the Greater Jefferson County Foundation that also verify to IRS what he's done. And then there is what we're going to do as far as celebrating this with him in a way he wants, which my understanding is will be a ribbon cutting of some kind, but not that night. It'll be after, after we accept it and the city owns it, we'll have a nice time with him. So I guess I'll kind of leave it up to you. We'll probably circulate an email or something so that you're all familiar with what the timeline is on that. But it's an awfully nice gift, turning out nice. And anyway, we just got some fine tuning to do on the documentation.
Great. Thank you, John.
I'd make the motion that we set the public hearing for the acceptance of the dedication deed for March 24, 2021.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Toohill?
May 24th.
Yeah, May. I said March, didn't I?
That's a long time ago.
I said 2021, so we already did it.
It could be 2022.
Any other questions or discussion? No, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Next action item, thank you, counsel. Consideration to accept proposed street improvements, 23rd, 9th, and C Street paving. Melanie?
So the motion for you tonight is to accept the bids on this project. And we're not asking you to award it tonight. The city received one bid from Jones Contracting of West Point, Iowa, at $1,350,777 and zero cents. This was about $200,000 over the engineer's estimate, which is about 17%. We, we're not concerned that the numbers are artificially inflated. Most of the increase in cost is in the concrete. And just with the instability of the market, the fact that this is such a larger project than Maryland Carpenter, we got really good bids on Maryland Carpenter, but that was also a very quick, very relatively easy project that they knew they could get done within a certain time period and keep prices in that time period. So we really think that the price, the overrun is due to the size of the project. But the reason why we're asking you not to award it tonight is we want to double check with Piper Jaffray, look at our bonding package, look at our contingencies for our other projects, decide if we want to modify this project or if we have room in the bonding structure that we proposed in order to cover this. So we want you to be able to award the project however it may be modified at your next meeting. So right now, I'm just asking you to accept the bids. Bid.
What's the name of the company? If you can see it on the screen there.
Jones Contracting.
So move that we accept a bid from Jones Contracting for the...
We call it the 2021 Bond Package.
2021 Bond Package.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any other questions? No, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is ordinance number 1200, Amendment to Code Section 13.04 Sewer Connections. This is the third and final reading. Melanie, you want to just do a quick review of those changes?
Yep. So the main thing that we are changing is the cost for connections of both new and existing. We are decreasing the connection cost. Currently, a new, or to replace an existing service lateral, the cost is $351.67. We're proposing taking that down to zero as listed in the purpose. The reasoning for this is to help our, meet our EPA compliance order of reducing the infiltration. And if we can take out any city hurdles in people replacing that, that's better for us.
Thank you. Counsel?
I make the motion we approve ordinance 1200.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Rasmussen. Any other questions or discussion? No, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 1201, this is the third and final reading, rezoning, consideration of rezoning to mixed use. Melanie, again, you want to do a quick review for the public?
Yep. So Planning and Zoning and Economic Development Committee have been working on this for over a year, starting with drafting of the ordinance or the zoning requirements related to the mixed-use zoning. And so then this is the last step of physical, well, legally rezoning the property to this use. Any existing uses within this area are grandfathered in, but this does open up more opportunities for different types of businesses. First Floor Residential is the, I'll say, the largest change in this proposed rezoning. So once the, this gets published and it becomes an official ordinance of the city, I think we'll see some, maybe not some construction permits, but at least some people changing the uses of their buildings. And hopefully, the physical improvements will follow in the year to come, but this is the first step.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion that we finalize the ordinance here with this third re...
Moved by Ham?
I'll make that second. After, after all these months, it's kind of amazing we've got here finally.
Second by Hallie. Any other questions or discussion? No, please call the roll.
Ham?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
I have nothing for the mayor's report. John, do you have anything for city attorney?
One thing I'd like to say something about, it's not going to go away. Right now, there's probably about 150 Facebook commentaries on the flag over by Penn School, and the F-bomb being dropped on President Biden. We had an F-bomb in the room tonight against Derry, but the whole point is, F-bomb appears to be now used as I'm politically opposed to something. And again, that's not the same as a lot of other understandings of it, but it's a, it's a piece of profanity, it's a piece of slang, and it's also a piece of protected speech generally unless it's advocating violence. And I guess when somebody goes on social media and wants to talk about what we should do about this, I know how we can deal with this, but I don't think we'll get anywhere with it. We, we have both disturbing the peace and a disorderly conduct ordinance that both look at things that are so offensive that they offend public decency. But those arguments have been out there for the last 50 years. Iowa is a source of a landmark case that had to do with the Des Moines School District and a plaintiff named Tinker who basically wore a shirt with a peace symbol on it during the Vietnam War, an armband. And other kids picked up on it, and the school board said, you can't do that, and we'll discipline you. And it went through the district court system in Iowa when it went to the Iowa Supreme Court. The Iowa Supreme Court let the school board impose discipline, but it never got anywhere because it went to the US Supreme Court, and the US Supreme Court said, no, no, that's clearly a form of freedom of expression that you shouldn't be messing with. And that's what we're going to run into here. And there's different perspectives on how you deal with this stuff. We could go into court and ask for an injunction against a person flying that kind of flag across the street from the school. It's not exactly across the street from the school, but it's a couple of blocks from the school. I'm sure there's a lot of kids that walk by and probably once in a while, one of them goes home and asks mom and dad, what's that all about? But if you were to use the district court system to enjoin that, there is a group of cases that let you do something to have the court consider whether there should be a prior restraint imposed. And the court has to define what it is that is an impermissible expression of speech. And I think it'd come back to, is somebody really advocating that somebody should commit a forcible sexual offense on the president when they say that on their flag? And there'll be 1,000 other arguments that it means something else. So you probably don't get there with injunctive relief because the court wouldn't impose that kind of injunction. Probably run into the same kinds of things as far as the definition in front of a magistrate or a district court judge as far as our ordinances. There are public decency statutes in the Iowa code, but they're kind of like ours as far as what they generally mean. So you probably overnight, you're going to see the social media stuff about double on this. And I've already seen some of them suggesting that you should be calling Aaron, you should be calling me. The mayor will get some calls. And frankly, there's not a whole lot we can do short of advocacy towards violence. You know, if that flag was saying someone should kill the president, we could impose both a restraint against it and probably say that that's gone too far. It's like yelling "fire" in the theater, and that's one of the classic stoppers on too much freedom of expression. But at this point, it's out there. One of the best ways to deal with this over time, I think, is just deprivative of oxygen, and it'll go away. But the other side of it is, if we make very much out of it, it'll probably improve flag sales. And that's not necessarily something we want to see happen. So I don't know if some of you have been called about it, but I expect you will be.
John, just so you know, I, I was contacted last week by a concerned citizen. I wrote just a very general letter to the resident, because I didn't know who lives there, asking them to just reconsider the language on the, on the flag, that I was not trying to, you know, they have their free speech, they're welcome to that, I'm not trying to change that. I'm just asking them to reconsider the profane language on, on the flag. And that, you know, they were near a school, so they got a hint of, of, you know, the sensitivity of that for children. So.
Yeah. I appreciate that on that. But that's my two cents worth on it, and I, I don't anticipate short of somebody going off the deep end on this and doing something physical or vengeful, being a vigilante or something like that. I just, I don't see it turning into something that's going to go to court in this city. But I guess we'll see. If, if it heats up to the point where you got thousands of social media comments and people demanding somebody's neck, I don't, I don't see a way for the city really to put a stop to that kind of expression. And it's basically not the role of government to keep people from expressing their political opinions. It's too bad they chose that verbiage. But anyway.
Thank you for bringing, bringing that up, John. Okay, committee and board reports. Public safety is, I'm going to...
That's Katie, but I can give you a general overview. We've been-
Okay, please.
We've been going through the sections of the code that are more specific towards public safety. We've had two meetings at a little bit of a, little over an hour a pop. We're going to have another one, not this week, but next week. Hopefully, we'll be closer to being finished with that section. And then we can move on to another committee to keep finishing up the, the codification. But that's what public safety and transportation has been working on at this point.
Thank you. Michael?
John Preston, here's the DNR. No, John. He's a DNR employee who facilitates tours for preserves that the State Preserve Board is considering, organized a meeting with the preserve board where they actually came down to Fairfield last Friday afternoon and spent a couple hours walking around Lambs and Woods. We also had the director and assistant director of the DNR show up, which was pretty cool, because they were invited in a week's notice and decided to come. And we also had our city, our city engineer, Melanie, we had Calvin Todd from Park and Rec, and Pam Craft as well. Can't necessarily know which direction things are going, but they heavily hinted at a passage of our, adoption of our management plan. They have one other management plan to look at from another preserve near Decorah, that they're going to do that tour, and then after that, they'll meet virtually and decide. So knock on wood. I couldn't find any words. We'll get our approval, I'm saying that maybe next month.
Depending on who you talk to, you were okay there.
All right. Well, we'll keep you posted, but it was good, good that they came in person, saw it, really appreciated what we were putting forth, asked a few questions, and I think the positivity they had when they left was very encouraging.
Thank you. Administrator and department reports?
I've, I've put a memo in front of all of your seats. It's basically the, we actually went one month over on the quarterly financial report, but I actually have a, it's actually pretty good news. We have, as far as revenues concerned, we have, overall, our general budget has brought in around 92% to 93% of our, our overall revenue for the year, and our overall expenditures are at 82%. So we're doing pretty well. I think most of that, obviously, has come, the increase in revenues has come from the CARES Act and from road use tax dollars that have come in higher than expected. Well, road use tax is getting more money basically through the CARES Act also. Some of our departments that can raise money, i.e. the police department, the library, those revenues are down mostly because of either being closed or doing the, the library's curbside pickup and stuff like that. Police Department has, because of this last year with their traffic stops and stuff, being way down because of training and stuff like that. So those things are down, but all in all, I would say our financial outlook for the city at this point in time, as a snapshot, is actually pretty decent. I still would be very cautious with spending money because we don't know what the futures are going to hold. So I, me being a little bit cautious when it comes to that, I would recommend caution. Good to go along with that. Our bank interest is really poor right now. Our CD rate is only at seven, seven tenths of a percent. My, the, my, the money market account at First National is getting minimal interest, and our checking account actually got more interest than our money market this last month. So it's just a word of caution. Yes, we have money right now, but we have to make that work in our favor, not get excited.
All righty. And nothing from you, Melanie, tonight? All righty. Okay, if there's nothing else, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Toohill?
Second.
Second by Ham. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, counsel.